Order for December 4th, 2018. Mr. Goodspeed, would you leave us in place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you all sit down, if we take a moment to remember George H.W. Bush, our 41st President.
Our what?
41st. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Cooper. Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
Waste water treatment plant director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Public safety director.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Do we have any citizens that would like to comment on the agenda-related items tonight? Seeing none, consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be reviewed and managed. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balance, revenue and expenses, notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. First, Goodspeed, a second vice. Shemansky, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The council audit committee is established by Section 23 of the City Council Guidelines. This section spells out the duties and responsibilities of the committee. As part of its responsibilities, the audit committee prepares a written report on how the committee discharges duties and responsibilities. At this time, council could take action to accept the annual report of the council audit committee.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem and a second vice, Shemansky. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
This time, we'll have our presentation by Ken Tolzma of Anderson-Tacman and the, on the June 30th, 2018 audit.
First, thanks for having me here to present the 2018 audit results. Kent Tolzma is the partner, head of the engagement again this year for 2018. And just to give some background, as always with the audit, what the reasons for having it are is because the government requires that all municipalities like cities and counties and school districts and villages and townships to have audits annually to make sure that there's an accounting of all the assets and liabilities and fund balances and revenues and expenditures and to make sure that within a high degree, there's accuracy in those amounts and that the different accounting rules and accounting standards are all followed to year in year by the city. Some of the things we do with our audit, we do a lot of transaction testing, especially in the areas of receiving money, dispersing money, payroll systems, general entries to make sure that basically you're following the prescribed methods of doing things that the state has, at least like their minimum requirements to make sure that as money makes into the city, all the documentation's completed, all the authorizations, all the record keeping's done properly and recording and makes it safely to the bank. And the same thing with disbursements and payroll and those things to make sure that you're using the proper checks and balances or internal controls, we like to call them, to make sure that everything's safeguarded and accounted for properly. We also do substantive testing, which is to gain evidence like on your cash accounts to make sure that those are accurate. Some of the things we do with that are we'll send third-party confirmations directly to each bank that you have money with, and we'll also confirm every account that they have and ask them if there's anything else that wasn't shown on the records to make sure there isn't any new accounts open or anything that could sneak by. So those are some of the substantive tests. We'll also do that with debt. We'll confirm every debt obligation you have. We'll do tests of the property taxes because that's a large revenue. We'll confirm with the state your revenue sharing as well as your street fund monies to make sure all that's tying out accurately. And one of the last things we like to do is we look at analytical relationships. After doing several cities and doing cities in your area, we kind of can recognize patterns here based on things that happen and we kind of get expectations for relationships and how things ought to go up and down with expenditures. Like for instance, if there's a hard winter in the region, you expect more expenditures in that area for the major and local street funds. If it's easier, you expect it lower and some of those things. So make sure things are meaner expectations. If they don't, we drill down and do a lot more testing in those areas. And two, we like to move around and try to be unpredictable throughout the year too just because we've, you know, the method of auditing has changed probably from 10 years ago, being that we're supposed to assess risk in areas and move around and make sure. We look at different things each year. Sometimes clients will say, "Well, nobody looked at," especially when you switch auditors, "nobody looked at that before." And well, you've got to move around and do different things all the time. You can't just do the same old thing. So that's kind of with our process. And at the end of that, we give an opinion on the accuracy of the financial statements. That's pretty much the crux of the audit. And there's four kinds. There's the adverse, which is the bad one, meaning when we got through with the audit and we got our evidence back, there were discrepancies. They say maybe your cash was overstated compared to what we could find for evidence. There's a disclaimer when there isn't information to disprove or prove it. Then there's a qualified, which means pretty much everything's okay except maybe an area's weak, like maybe your depreciation records aren't, you know, as accurate as they should be. But a lot of the other things, like your cash records and fund balance expenses are all highly accurate, but maybe just one area's weak. And then the fourth and the one that the city got again this year is the unmodified opinion, which means that everything was done accurately and correctly as far as an accounting or an auditing of the financial statements. So that's what the opinion you got again this year was, the unmodified opinion. And maybe it doesn't sound like the best one, but it actually is. It's meaning there weren't any issues found. And again, you have an audit done annually and it's also done under governmental auditing standards. And what that kind of brings in is there's a lot of different statutes and rules that have to be followed by local governments. Say for instance, if you use, if your staff use credit cards to buy things, there's a state required policy with certain elements that have to be present. Investing has to have state minimum requirements, purchasing, procurement, different things. So we've got to make sure that all the policies are at least meeting the state minimum requirements and tests to make sure that you're following them. So that's part of our audit too. So that's not everything we do, but just to give you an idea of some of the things that roll up in the audit and that we go through as far as the week we're here. Next, I've got a packet of graphs that are in hard copy and then we've also had the same thing up on a projector to kind of show how the finances fared for the year. And the first one shows all the assets comparatively from 17 to this year. I think you can see most of the things are staying pretty even. Your investments were slightly, slightly better than last year, largely with the gas and oil fund that had a stronger year than last year, probably leading to that. Next, we have the liabilities of the city. And again, these first couple graphs are showing the entire city, all, everything put together, the general fund and all the funds combined. We look at the accounts payable, accrued liabilities, a lot of those things, everything's pretty even. Bonds payable, we had a slight decrease. Pension liability got a little bit better this year with the market, stock market doing better. We're seeing the returns quite improved on the assets and those pension plans. So that's gaining ground pretty good the last couple of years compared to what's owed with the long-term liability is for the pension. Then the OPEB went down a bit from 123 last year to 118, and that also went through some changes this year. The accounting standards changed. There was a GASB 45 that controlled the accounting of the old method. We had to switch to 75, which is quite a bit more complex. I think that's why most cities and counties and broke, using actuarial companies to help calculate that money that's required with the OPEB liability, and that's what the city did this year to make sure that we had a good accounting for it under the new rules. And fortunately, in your case, your liability didn't fluctuate too much. It actually went down a little bit. But some municipalities saw quite increases because the methodology changed. The old rules kind of looked at what the contribution was that was required annually and compared that to what you were actually paying in. So the old, the old liability was shown here was just that, was what they thought you should be putting in versus what you are, and any shortfall was the liability. The new method is pretty much like the pension. They're looking at what the whole liability is in present value dollars and at today's point on the balance sheet for that, those obligations for the OPEB liabilities. So I think you guys have fared better than most for going through that change and not having quite an increase as we've seen with some other governments. Next, we have the net position of the entire city, and that broken into unrestricted portions, restricted. And restricted means anytime you have money raised by grants or by millages or special assessments, anytime we have residual amounts of that, that's got to be kept in a separate bucket and be used for that particular purpose moving forward. It can't just be used for general expenditures. It's got to stay for whether it's major street activities, local street activities, different grants and things like that, it's got to stay intact. And then our largest portion, which is pretty common with most cities, is what we call investment capital assets. This is all the infrastructure and the buildings and land and equipment that this utilizes to provide services for the residents. And that's like most cities, the biggest area of net position or equity. Next, we have the revenues over the last three years showing pretty close results as far as the taxes and licenses and federal sources. I think the state sources were a little bit better. Charge of shares did a bit better. The interest in rents largely comes from the oil and gas fund, that's comparative, and then other revenues also comparative. Next is the expenses showing legislative, which is the council, general government operations, public safety, public works, recalculation, how those fare, other expenses, capital outlay, and debt service. Debt service is the principal and interest expense each year to repay debt of the city. The next graph shows the revenues of the water and sewer fund altogether, what charges were for that, what refunds were earned and interest and state grants. The state grant was started last year and also went into this year. We had the SAW grant, which is, I believe it's the Stormwater Assets Waste Water Management System Grant, which is a state grant for updating the different monitoring and computer systems related to the water and sewer operations. We had about $900,000 last year and about another 440 on that this year. And we go to the next graph that shows the expenses now of the water and sewer operations. And the, with that SAW grant, where it's spent mostly is for contracted services, which shows why it was so large last year and again this year. Then the next biggest area is personal services, which is the salaries and fringes of the water and sewer department. There's insurance expenses, administration, equipment rental and supplies, all pretty The next graph shows the continuation of those water and sewer expenses, showing a bit of a bump in utility expenses. Otherwise, the repair and maintenance stayed pretty even compared to last year. Depreciation of the assets landed at 1.2 million. We have miscellaneous expenses and then interest on the debt too, which went down from about 302,017 to about 227,000 this year. So as the debt gets paid off, more goes to the principal, less to the interest. So we see usually a decrease in interest expense with time, as long as we don't take out any new debt issues, then I can increase it again. And then the last graph shows the fund balance, so just the general fund, which is the, again, the most important property under the city for the last five years. It shows we had a little bit of a decrease from 17, landing at 1.3 million. So you're still at a safe place with your fund balance. Usually the rule of thumb that the, I believe it's the U.S. Finance Officers Administration came up with this percentage of 10 to 15 percent being a floor, that they don't like to see your fund balance ever fall below that floor as a safe spot. I think you guys maybe around 20, 20 percent. So you're above that 15 percent in a safe place. And it's nice to kind of give you a buffer in the case that there's changes in funding or reductions of funding. It gives you some wiggle room to adjust or make changes without having to cut services or do anything drastic right away. So it gives you a little bit of saving to be able to deal with things that come up. So you're still in a place that's pretty favorable for your fund balance at the end of 2018. Any questions about the numbers so far? I think financially, it shows you guys are, you know, as I said, most of your revenues are holding pretty steady. Some of them are doing a little bit better. So financially, it looks like you're, you know, not doing, you know, dramatically better than last year, but you're doing slightly stronger than last year, which is I think a good trend. You're kind of staying in a safe place each year.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For that presentation.
And I end too with thanking the city staff too for all their help in pulling all the information. We send lists ahead of time, asking for a lot of things. And like I said, because we've got to be unpredictable, we, when we show up, we'd look at a lot of other things too that are kind of just on surprise. So we appreciate their working with us and finding things in a timely manner and answering our questions and getting, getting us everything we need to do so we can, you know, have enough evidence to hang our hat on for an audit opinion. So everybody was very cooperative and timely and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Consideration of an agreement with Anderson-Tacman and Company PLC for city and DDA audit services. The city's contracts with Anderson-Tacman and Company PLC for city and DDA audit is expiring. The city issued a request for proposal for auditing services. Six firms responded. The council audit committee met on November 13th to review the bids. Anderson-Tacman and Company PLC was the lowest responsible bidder and is recommended by the committee. They bid a total of $47,500 for five years of conducting the base audit, $7,500 for five years for conducting the DDA audit, and $2,500 per year to conduct a city audit if needed. The city attorney has prepared the contract for these services. At this time, council could take action to enter into a five-year agreement with the option, with an optional three-year extension with Anderson-Tacman and Company PLC to conduct the city and DDA audits. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a regional fire authority comprised of City of Manistee, Manistee Township, and the Charter Township of Philer. The supervisors of Manistee and Philer Township and the representatives, representative fire chiefs are interested in exploring the concept of a regional fire authority with the City of Manistee. It is believed that a regional fire authority could resolve some identifying constraints common to all as it relates to providing fire and emergency medical services. It merits discussion with the governing bodies of the City of Manistee, Manistee Township, and the Charter Township of Philer. At this time, council could take action to hold a joint meeting with the Manistee, with Manistee and Philer Township boards to discuss the concept of a regional fire authority. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this, will this have any impact on our contract that we have with firefighters?
Well, it depends on where it goes. Obviously, if all the parties agree that they want to explore it, there's going to be some contractual issues.
What's the concept behind it?
Well, the public safety director, Kozel, and I have had a couple of meetings with the two township supervisors and their fire chiefs just to engage with them on how we can work better together. And then I threw out the idea, has anybody ever considered a regional fire authority? Because we all are facing similar problems in terms of, you know, financing our departments, adequate response on the major incidences, things of that nature. And there was some interest in of moving it forward, moving the discussion forward because obviously I don't, you know, I don't speak for the council and the supervisors don't speak for their boards entirely. So we thought it was worth getting the boards together and at least talk and find out, is there any interest? And if there is, we can move forward, and if there isn't, then it's done. But I think it's, in my opinion, I think it's worth having a discussion. So I think there could be some benefits derived.
If we had a regional fire authority, that would be its own taxing authority, correct?
Correct. It can be, yes. It would have its own governing body.
Have we run this by our employees or?
Yes, the public safety director has.
Okay, so then we're all good with that? They're all good with that?
Well, to my knowledge, they haven't said no or hell no, so.
Chief, what do you think?
Discussions that, like the city manager has said, is just to have further discussions. And that's what I've talked about with all the firemen within our unit. So there hasn't been any nuts or bolts or anything about what, how it's going to pan out. I just want to, you know, assure our guys that they, nothing can affect their job. So that's the biggest input that I have right now because there's so much to talk about and so much to think about how this would actually work. So I think that if it can benefit us as a city, that, you know, it's something that we should explore though.
And there's no one way to do it. I mean, all the, it would be tailored to the community's needs. And it would be, you know, probably to a certain degree, unique to our community as opposed to maybe some other communities.
I like the idea because I've watched Traverse City and they're having problems up there though. That's probably a bit to personal boards or something. But I think it's a good idea. I think we should explore it.
Any other?
I don't have any problem exploring it. It was very successful in the Village of Oxford when they decided to do a separate taxing authority for combined fire between the township and Oxford. And of course, the population of those two entities is bigger than the county of Manistee. So it worked, it's worked very well downstate. So it's at least worth talking about. I think if you don't talk about it, you always wonder. So I think that's the right course of action.
Well, already there's services back and forth from Philer to Manistee.
Yeah, and there's great working relationships between the three departments, and that's what really precipitated our meetings was we're doing things right. Are there other things we could be doing and improve on our relationship or the way we work together? And then this was an, you know, outgrowth.
I think as long as there's, you know, a going in, that there's not going to be any degradation to the abilities that we currently have in the city to be able to protect our citizens, I think we're on the right path.
Right. And they're, you know, I've told the director and he's passed it on to his people, and I'm not by any way suggesting that we lose employees and lose full-time people. We need to enhance the way we deliver services to our community, and if we can work with two other communities to do the same thing in their communities, I think it's in everybody's best interest.
Through mutual aid, we're pretty much working together anyway and helping each other.
We are, yeah.
Now we just want to put it as an organization, as a district.
Yeah.
And maybe everybody can save a dollar.
Or improve service delivery, one of the two.
Anything else? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The city, consideration of issuing a request for proposal for building, plan, review, and inspection services. The city currently uses the state of Michigan to perform building, plan, reviews, and inspection services. This arrangement is cost-effective to the city with no direct cost. However, some optional issues exist, operational issues exist. It is thought that engaging a private sector contractor to perform these, those services will still remain cost-neutral to the city and resolve our operational issues. At this time, council could take action to authorize the city manager to issue a request for proposals for building, plan, review, and inspection services. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
What are some of the operational issues?
Well, one of the, the big thing is, is that we can't get a copy of the final, you know, the building permit finalized unless we file a freedom of information request with the state of Michigan. And we need that information to make sure that our assessing function is updated correctly. The second is that we intermittently get complaints from our community that they're having a hard time getting an inspector, whether it's, you know, a mechanical inspector, plumbing inspector, building, electrical. And the other thing too is there's, there's, you hear about it, and I saw it in other communities that contract with the state. A lot of times, the inspectors will say, "Take some pictures and send it to me," and they'll approve it by a picture, which I don't think is the, I wouldn't want to do it that way. So there's just, those are the issues that we're facing.
Again, by, from how I understand this, these will all be fee-based? In other words, the person who is requesting the inspection would basically be paying the fee.
And the fee would?
Reimburse the city for this, the cost of this?
Mm-hmm.
And would that fee be similar to what's being paid to the state?
Yeah, we set the fees. And in quite, there are a number of examples across the state where if you, if you work with a private contractor, they'll take 90 percent of the fees and give you 10 percent, which it's not a lot, but it's a cost sharing. So I don't, I can, I'm certain I can say we're not going to, it's not going to cost us anything more. It might cost the city less in terms of we get some, we might get some back.
And the fees would stay the same for the citizens?
Right.
Okay.
Do we have anybody private sector doing it now?
Manistee Township is engaged with a company that also works in Benzy County. There's a number of companies that would do it, or I should say capable of doing it.
I think we need, I think we need to look at it and really think about doing this because speed is, the speed in which you get the results back are important to our citizens.
And just to remind council, this is just the authorization to issue a request for proposals, and then they would be brought back to council for final consideration. So you're not committing to anything other than issuing the RFP.
I think we have to do something for the people to get their permits quicker too. Some people had to really wait a long time to get them.
Anybody else? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of committee appointments. The mayor has the duty to appoint some committees. I've done that. I'll go over those committee appointments. Alternative for area youth, Aaron Pontiac. Audit committee, Linda Beaton, Aaron Pontiac, and Mick Shemansky. Revenue sharing board, myself. MRA board, Mike Shemansky. 911 board authority, Robert Goodspeed. Oil and gas board, myself, Aaron Pontiac, and Edward Bradford. Ordnance committee, Linda Beaton, chair. Ordinance committee, Linda Beaton, chair, Robert Goodspeed and Dale Cooper. Sands part control board, Aaron Pontiac and Jeff McCula. I don't think I need to appoint Jeff, maybe I do. Utility committee, Dale Cooper, chair, James Grabowski and Mike Shemansky. I would entertain a motion to accept those nominations.
I made a motion, we accept. Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, you have?
Yes, I would like to appoint to the personnel committee, Mayor Zalinski, council member Robert Goodspeed and council member Jim Grabowski.
I would entertain a motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notice, communications and announcements. At a regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, authorization or department. This time, Ms. Heather Pethley will report on the activities of the city clerk office and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. Thank you.
All right, so it's been an interesting first year as clerk. I took over as clerk January of this year upon Michelle's retirement. And the clerk's department consists of two full-time employees, myself as city clerk, I also handle the accounts payable for the office. And then there is Laura Lorraine, who is my deputy clerk. She also takes care of the payroll and insurance benefits for the office. And then we have part-time election workers that help us with our elections. We have approximately 35 workers that assist us with the elections. And I, we all maintain certifications in the office. I have, am certified as municipal clerk through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. I have my certification through the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. I still maintain my certification through the Michigan Certified Public Treasurers. I had to attain my accreditation through the state of Michigan for the elections, to run those elections. And then I also, as I said, do the accounts payable. And we've just completed our first year with our new system with the BSNA. And it seems to be working fairly well. I think everybody is getting used to our new system and, and we've worked out some kinks, so. But I've been with the city for 18 years. I started off in utility billing. I did that for 15 years, moved to payroll and then to deputy clerk and accounts payable. And then, of course, this year, transitioning into clerk. Laura Lorraine joined us about a year and a half ago, and she has been a great asset to our office. I asked her to be our, the deputy clerk, and she has done a wonderful job with that. She's assisted me with the elections. Again, as I said, she does the payroll and insurance benefits. She also received her accreditation through the state of Michigan for elections. This year, she started her Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks Basic Institute. It's a three-year program that you must attend three years consecutively. And through that, she will attain her certification as a certified Michigan municipal clerk as well. And she'll be taking her second week of training in March of 2019, and then her third week in 2020. There is training after that, which is the Master Academy, which I will attend also when I can. And then we get recertified as needed. Again, she started with us March of 2017. We work closely with the Finance and Treasures Department. And in that department is Kelly McCall. She does the accounts receivable and utility billing. She also attained her state of Michigan election accreditation. She serves on our receiving, receiving board. She's been a great asset to that as well. We have several election workers, but they can't always work all day long and then also have a fresh mind at the end of the night to, you know, take in all that information. So it's great to have Kelly come in and help us at the end of the night. And then there's Ed Bradford, who's been with us 15 years, I think, 17? Oh my goodness. And he's CFO. And then we have Angie Rab, who started with us January 8th of this year. And so she's coming up to her one-year anniversary. And she is currently working on cross-training with me on accounts payable, so that when I'm out of the office, if need be, she can, can help out with that. Department responsibilities for the clerk's office, we handle elections and voters' registration, payroll and employee benefits, insurance benefits, accounts payable, city council meetings and minutes, records, archival and retention through the laser fish administration. We've had 18 business registrations to date in 2018. We do bid openings for the city, historic research. Laura handles the rentals for the Marina Open Space, which keeps her very busy. That's been a great space. A lot of people are enjoying that. We also handle the medical marijuana application review. We have one application right now that is, has been turned in that we are in process of reviewing. And there's, of course, a lot more that we do. I did receive my recertification this year for sort of, for the certified Michigan municipal clerk. We both, Laura and I, attended the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks Annual Conference that was held at the Grand Tribers Resort this year. And we also attended training for the Qualified Voter File, the new system that the state of Michigan implemented this year, which was quite daunting. They implemented a new system that, they rolled it out before it was complete. But I'm proud to say that we stuck with it and we used it. A lot of municipalities chose to stick with the old system. And we stayed with it, and we used it for both elections, and we were successful with it. So that was very good. And we trained 25 election inspectors through the Manastee County Program in June and 10 more in October, and that included eight new inspectors that we were able to bring on staff. Laura attended the annual payroll conference and an FMLA workshop. We conducted two elections this year, the primary election August 7th and the general election November 6th. We had 1,429 voters, which was a 30% turnout in August, and 2,789 voters in November, which was a 58.42% turnout. It was a very busy election in November. And I have to say that our workers did an excellent job. We moved St. Joe. The location used to be upstairs in the parish center, and this year we did move it to the lower level. And I think it worked out very well. The transition went, went fairly smooth. And we're going to keep it in that lower level. It avoids conflict with any types of dinners that are going on or events that take place in the parish center. So we will be conducting the elections in the lower level of the parish center from now on. In 2019, we have the possibility of an election in May and one in August. The May would be if there's something for the schools that comes up August, there could be a special election. But we will definitely have our November election for city council, November 5th of And if you have any questions? Otherwise, I thank you for all your help this first year. It's been a really good first year, and I look forward to what's to come.
Question? I just have a comment.
Okay.
I don't really have a lot of words to express. Thank you for all that you do.
Well, thank you.
And the people there do, they, they work hard and make things happen. Sometimes not very noticeable, but it's going on every day. I appreciate it, I'm sure council appreciates it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I believe we're up to citizens' comments. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there any way you'd like to make a comment?
I'd like to, sir.
You betcha.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Sein. I own Sex Marina here in town. And I also own the Manastee Iron Works Building. A new cafe opened, and my concern is snow removal. They do not have a lot of parking the way it is. I've talked to our city manager, I've talked to Mr. McCula. The answer I get, it's not the DDA. So they cannot plow the sidewalk, they cannot haul the snow away. I'd like to know why. Number one, can we put it in the DDA? Number two, Manastee is supposed to be a rising tide community, ready to embrace new developments. This young couple's just starting out. If you're not gonna work with them and help them out to get people in their door, why are they gonna stick around? If another empty storefront, what can we do? Personally, I pay over $30,000 in taxes. I just got my bills. Merry Christmas, thank you. That's my winter tax. That building alone is over 4,200 bucks. And other than streetlights and plowing the roads, I don't see a lot of service. How can we fix it?
Are you done, Mr. Sein?
What are we looking for down there?
I would like, I would like the sidewalks plowed like the rest of River Street is, the snow plowed and hauled away so they have places to park, to make it safe for their customers to come in and out of their establishment. That's what I'm looking for.
Mr. Taylor, could we get something on the, the next work session to, with maybe some figures or?
You, you want it on a, as, on the, on an agenda or the work session? We could put it on the next work session, but we couldn't make a decision then. So it's, it's council's wishes. If, if you want it on a, a regular agenda, we can have discussion and then you could make a decision one way or the other, or we could have it on the work session.
We then have time to weigh the costs and the differences and all the options?
We should be able to, staff should be able to get some of that, or get that information available to you by the next council meeting.
Okay.
What currently does the DDA pay for services? Would that include the snow removal? It's around $18,000 a year or something?
Somewhere's around that number. It's not, I mean, and that's for everything that we do downtown.
In the, in the DDA district.
Yeah, in the DDA district.
Mr. Sein, I've got a question. Is there some property that you have that they could actually plow the snow into it rather than having to have it hauled away? Because that's part of the increased expenses. Not only do they plow, but then they have to actually have it put into a truck and move. If there was an, an area where they could actually just plow the snow, that may reduce the cost and make it a little bit more feasible for them to plow the sidewalks in the street.
Yes, sir, without a doubt.
Okay. I was thinking, kinda thinking, where the same parking lot we'll be using for the Sleigh Bell Parade, perhaps?
That, or to make it easier, right top of where the community garden is. Pop the fence down, they jump the curb, they can shove it in there.
Okay.
It wouldn't be a big issue, I don't feel. I guess it's all I got. I'd like to know how or why, or, and if you could get back to me, I'd really appreciate it.
Your, your interest, and we do wanna do everything, I'm sure council wants to do everything they can to promote small business and to keep people going. I appreciate you bringing up the, the issue, and we will discuss it, we will try to figure out a way that everybody wins. How's that?
That'd be awesome. And if we can fix this little problem now, if the development ever comes through for that building, there already got to start.
Well, there's been a lot of development there over the years. There was a time when they, they had a lot of plans for that area.
Correct.
A lot of development, like with your streetlights you referred to in your letter. They did a lot of work to, to extend the city that way.
Correct.
That never did pan out, but now maybe it would a little bit.
Roger, I'm still on the wrong side of the tracks, buddy.
No, you're the tracks.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Officials and staff, Mr. Taylor.
Nothing at this time.
Welcome back, Mr. Sein.
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
City clerk.
Nothing, your honor.
Our engineer.
Nothing, your honor, unless you'd like an update?
Did you have it real quick? Are we still on track?
Just get real quick. I'll just hit, hit a couple of the highlights, I guess, in the last couple of weeks. The Saw Grant is, you know, it was a three-year project that just was finished. And so we've met the DEQ requirements for the Saw Grant, where we've got a, well, a ton of data. There is a report, it's eight four-inch binders thick of different things that will be made, will be made available to the city. And we'll also have it digitally. That's getting prepared right now. But the biggest thing is, that project is over now. So we have collected the data, we've gone through the process, we've identified projects, which we've talked a lot about. And our last reimbursement on that will occur in the next month or so. And so we'll be done hearing about the Saw Grant. We may do a presentation possibly in winter, just to show you kind of the final product of that. But, so that's the Saw Grant. The basis of design, as we've discussed, we've been, we met with the DEQ months ago, they had some questions, a long list of questions. We responded to those yesterday with a 39, 39-page response about the basis of design for the projects we have coming up. And so gets into a lot of details about how we made assumptions, but the bottom line is, we've responded and we continue to work back and forth with the DEQ on that. And then the two rural development loans we're going after, rural development one, which is the rehab work. We're really, based on the Saw results, we're finalizing what streets, and we're gonna be getting into plan and profile design work, you know, for the next several months now to be able to bid that later this winter. We are trying to leverage some of the storm sewer work that'll be involved with RD1 to do street work. So we're trying to, you know, kinda pair the work we're doing in the streets so we can get at least part of, part of some of our roads paid for as opposed to fully coming out of the street fund. And then RD2, which is down at the plant, continue, we continue to move forward on it. We're looking, you know, we're pretty much locking into the six million gallons of storage based on DEQ review. It's gonna be probably three large tanks. We're gonna be doing headworks, building, that'll have screening, grit removal, pumps in it, that'll be constructed on-site on the Morton property that we're looking, getting a purchase agreement on. The pipe, we now know probably the size of the pipe between CSO 18, where it gets abandoned to the plant, which is about 3,000 feet, has to be about a 48-inch diameter sanitary sewer. That's to get all that water that was going over the weir to the river, or to the lake, now going to the plant. That's gonna be a very intense project going down through city streets. That's kind of just hitting some quick highlights for you without wasting too much of your time, but.
I appreciate it.
Questions or?
Sounds like you're knee-deep in it.
Yeah, we're definitely knee-deep. Thank you.
Brett, you have anything?
No, I have a sign.
Public Safety.
Probably red, we've had a couple of, that we've had here in the city that have had very good positive results. We had a very severe beating, domestic assault, that, well, we wound up getting cooperation from the county, the tribe, K-9, state police, drug team. It was a very unique investigation, but we were able to grab the guy, and he's currently spending some time over there at the county sheriff's department. So he has some considerable charges that were brought against him, but it was a, it was a good team effort with everybody in, in the county. Secondly, we had a house fire over on Sixth Street. If it weren't for the, our full-time fire department with Captain Cameron and Captain Petty's response, just the two of them, we might've lost that house. I mean, they were able to get to the scene, dress the hydrant, extend the five-inch, get water to the end. water to the engine, pull the line, get into the house, and contain it to the backside of the house without extension. The house is gonna be able to still be inhabited and refurbished, so it was actually work by the two of them to contain that fire, so I'd like to thank them for their hard work, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper.
I have nothing.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I don't have anything, other than it's been a good week, so what can I say?
Councilwoman Goodspeed.
Jeff, can I talk to you for like five minutes after meeting? Thanks.
Mr. Grabowski.
The only thing is, you know, this is my first time going through the audit, and I want to just thank the, the auditor as well as the audit committee, city manager, and the department heads, because it's, it's pretty apparent that people are, are being good stewards of the city's money. They're looking after, you know, you can kind of see that people are watching the pennies and, you know, and again, it adds up. So just wanted to thank all the city workers for being conscientious and really a good job, I think, this year with the, with the budget that as I see it. And then lastly, just want to remind everyone that the Sleigh Bell Weekend starts on Friday and our big parade, so hope to see you all enjoying that event on Saturday at 5:00.
Well, if you're watching the news tonight, the stock market dropped 800 points, so I think with that, with the budget stuff coming up pretty soon, we're gonna have to start watching more. They're predicting for next year, lower interest, next year, more, they're dogging down to over 0 percentage.
Councilwoman Pontiac.
I was just gonna say the same thing as Mick, is the Sleigh Bell Weekend, and it's gonna be a busy weekend, so enjoy it.
On behalf of the city, I hope everybody has an opportunity to get out and enjoy what Manistee has to offer this weekend, because this is really, truly a wonderful event. Takes a lot of volunteers, and we thank all of those people that make this possible. With that, I'll entertain a-
I'll make it.
Thank you.